Issues raised at prior meeting? Special events, Felicia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First on the agenda is the March for Our Lives event on March 24th. Second is the Rodeo for Recreation, which will require street closures as well as fireworks. Third is the Memorial Day Carnival hosted by Triumph and Life Church in Bradley Park. Next is the Central New Jersey Brain Tumor Remembrance Ceremony to be held on May 12th on the beach. Super Safe Summer on May 19th. Georgie's First Annual Car Show, a fundraiser benefiting Little League. They're seeking street closures of Steiner Place for the event on May 19th. Asbury Icebreak Swim Event on June 16th. Festival of Life to be held in Bradley Park, June 24th through the 29th. Asbury Park Family Day Surfing Event on July 14th. And one more triathlon on September 16th. And the last two events are weddings, one on August 11th, the other on September 22nd. Any questions? Thank you.
We'll move to items to be presented. The 508 Third Avenue College and Chief Proposed Improvements to Public Right-of-Way. Michelle.
Good evening, Council members and members of the public. This is to introduce you to the improvements in the public right-of-way that were requirements for 503 Third Avenue College and Chief Charter School that were placed upon them with their application to the zoning board of adjustment. They received approval and they had, in the public right-of-way, three specific conditions. One was for school safety zones, school safety zone signage, the repainting of three crosswalks, and the striping of a no parking zone in front of the proposed school. The crosswalks to be restriped are at the intersection of Emery and Third, Grandin Third, and Grandin Second. And you have an illustration showing the location of the new signage, and the green rectangle area will be the pickup zone. It will be for a half hour in the AM and the PM, no parking.
That's it?
That's it.
And the cost for this is bore by the applicant, right?
Yes, the cost is bore by the applicant. The signage and the painting of the crosswalks is a resolution. The no parking area is an ordinance, and you'll be seeing that hopefully next meeting.
So, and I'm 100% fine with this, how come it's all these and not this one?
That I cannot answer. Mike Manzella probably could answer that better. I guess this is also where, is this, I'm not sure how many crossing guards are there, but there was something that determined that these were the key intersections that...
So this will be on the next agenda. We can move this as quick as possible because it's holding up signatures and everything, so.
Review of this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Resolution 2018-107 is special event application, if you've heard. Resolution 2018-108 is declaring the third week in March as National Poison Protection Week. Resolution 2018-109 is the cancellation of taxes with respect to 601 X Street. Resolution 2018-110 is the disposition of surplus property, both computers and theater parks. And then Resolution 2018-111 is that lease applies with equal opportunity commission video hire price. Moving on to the individual resolutions. Resolution 2018-112 is temporary budget, and 113 is the payment of... Resolution 2018-114 is authorizing the lease agreement for the fire equipment storage in 801 Main Street. I'm going to ask that you table that for this meeting, so leases are finalized. We're hoping to have it done. Resolution 2018-115 is authorizing the purchase of a Packer truck. It's a garbage truck. Our current fleet, as I mentioned last time, is old, past useful life, and we need a new garbage truck. 2018-116 is amending a contract for T and M Services for the Sunset Avenue Footbridge Project. As part of the Footbridge Project, FEMA and DEP require additional work that was never authorized by the City Council in pursuit of the contract. As you read this resolution, you'll notice that it says we only pay T and M if we receive the 90% payment from FEMA. So this bill is on hold until we find out from FEMA, we'll be submitting the FEMA papers in pursuit of it. The project is still looking technically in FEMA's viewpoint. Resolution 2018-117 is a recommendation of contracts for installation of network cables for City Hall. We found that the second floor wiring is shot. It's probably 13 or 14 years old. It doesn't work as affected. We're finding technical glitches, and quite honestly, it was just flat installed wrong, so we're not seeing the correct network throughput on aspects. Resolution 2018-118 is awarding a contract for Millennium Communications for first security cameras in City Hall. As we previously mentioned over the last two years, two times, once the generator platform is done, we're going to move on to City Hall security. This is the first aspect of this. We're not telling people where we put the cameras, but we're installing security cameras. And then we hope to have an award for door access locks in the next meeting or two, or we have to go out to the people, we're still trying to figure out nuances of that. But this will allow us to have security, better security than this bill. Resolution 118 and 121 are for three SUVs under state contract. If we didn't do this today, tomorrow the price goes up $1,000. So by putting these resolutions on now will save us $4,000. There is different language in this that says we cannot pay anyone until the 20 days dollar period is over, which is actually the 23rd of the month, which we wouldn't be paying anyone anyway. But this at least allows us to get a purchase order illegally and save us the money that we otherwise have to spend. Resolution 122 is to authorize the final part of the parking data group that you've seen added. Additionally, this is going to include six dedicated H badge access points, parking meters for the water front, so we can try to continue to alleviate lines there. Internally, we're debating the finances of this. We might ask, if we had $16,000, if we weren't sure what we were using in the menu items, we should probably appropriate some of that money there and some of the utility money to help offset some of these costs. But this is all paid for as part of municipal bond as last year. Resolution 123 is ratifying the ASME union contract. This has been one of the five union contracts that I've been negotiating. It is less than the 2% that the state is required. It's been ratified by the ASME union, and the state has signed off on it. So tonight, we're asking that the government body sign off on it. In the next couple of weeks, we will probably have the other three or four contracts. Ordinances for introduction, let me stop, is there any questions so far? Ordinances for introduction is to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limit to establish a cap bank. What that does is allow us, and I'll make this as simple a term as possible, if you're allowed to have $100 in your appropriation limit, we spent 98 this year, and we appropriate 98. Next year, we can use that $2 extra for the following year's carryover. This is our second reading for three ordinances. One is for the carbon at the sewer plant. As we know, as I've mentioned, the fact that it's at the end of its useful life and has crossed some corders, we anticipate this being out to bid shortly. I think within the next seven, 10 days. Presenting ordinance 2018-8 is approving adopting redevelopment plan for 1001 First Avenue, which the city planner is here for any questions on. And then 2018-9 changes the inspection date for taxes from November to March. Lastly, the K on the agenda is Resolution 2018-120, which introduces the municipal budget. Again, as you've heard me say, when we had the historic moody's of three levels on our credit rating, this is the first budget that does, in many years, that does not request transitional aid from the state. We've had requested no transitional aid dollars. We still will be under the management principles. They still have, say, hirings and firings and suspensions and how we operate. But the financial side of things, there's no money associated with this draft budget. The highlights of the budget...
That's a huge, huge thing for Asbury Park.
Yeah.
It does feel...
Thank you. The average assessed home is $297,820 this year, which is about $45,000 from last year. The assessed home last year was $215,241. The average taxpayer will see a decrease of $46.66 as we stand now. Last year, the average taxpayer had an increase of $101. So you're really looking at maybe someone with a home of $320, $340 would see a zero on the municipal portion. Obviously, we all control school or county, but the municipal portion, a majority of the property owners will see a zero on the municipal side. Our tax collection rate was a little less, which we've been working on. It was 0.3, it was like 2.0. But otherwise, financially, we are, we're learning to walk. And in one or two more years, we will be in a very, very stable position. Any questions?
Go back to 121 for a second, just because there was an add-on, I wasn't paying attention. Is that to replace or to add to the fleet?
121? It's to replace one that caught a fire in the area.
All right, thank you.
Matters by the City Council?
So I'd just like to remind everyone about the march on March 24th. Kids and families will march for our lives, take to the streets to demand that lives and safety be a priority and to end gun violence. So in Asbury Park, this will take place at Trinity Church at 11:30. People will gather and then march over to Library Square Park at noon. Hope you can all make it.
Wait, Trinity...
Trinity Episcopal Church at 11:30.
And then, oh, walk over to Library.
And then walk over to Library Square Park at noon.
That's been changed, man.
That's what's on this flyer that I got.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's going to start at Bradley?
No, it started Library Park and going...
Library to Bradley.
Library to the...
Okay. Well, the flyer I got yesterday from Sue Chapman says they're starting at Trinity at 11:30 and then going to Library. So it'll be somewhere. You'll see the crowd find us.
Just let the police know, and now they have to put down...
And maybe to call Mark, right? Is it Mark who the city, I think Mark McDonald, somebody the stealing...
Mark McDonald is doing it, yeah, yeah. Felicia, do you know, do you have better information than I have?
No, I thought it was Library Square Park as well.
Okay.
That's what they applied for, and that's where we approved it, the special events, and that was what the police put in the budget for.
To go from Library to Bradley?
Right.
Well, Trinity is...
But they're meeting at Trinity across the street first.
Right, but you gotta exclude traffic, so you may need another... I'm sure they can work it out. It'll be fixed, but no problem.
We'll be there.
I'll be in high school to be there.
The only thing I have is there's going to be an expansion at Friday night, St. Stephen's Church, 7:00 PM.
So I just want to say what an amazing job the organizers of the St. Patrick's Day Parade, including our very own Eileen Chapman, that seemed like, at least I've been walking in it for the last five years, and that seemed like one of our biggest crowds, four years, four or five years. However long I've been on the council, I've been walking in it. And no major issues that evening, from what I read on our police reports. So all around, great job by everyone, including the visitors, the organizers, and the residents in Asbury. That's it.
And I feel the exact same way. It was a great parade. Nobody realizes it takes you a year to pull that off, and so many volunteers, so great job, great day. The crowd on Ocean Avenue was like the crowd on Cookman Avenue, which we've never seen before. So definitely the biggest crowd ever, looking forward to next year. Getting back to the introduction of municipal budget, as much as Amy said kudos, I totally agree. This is something that this council has been working for...
Four years.
Four years. To get off of transitional aid and to come in with, we were hoping a flat budget to stabilize taxes, to be able to reduce them as much as it's only a couple pennies. Like Michael said, we're starting to walk, and in a year or two, we'll be trotting or running. So again, I congratulate everybody who was part of this, the council, the administration, the taxpayers for bearing with us, knowing that we were transitional, and we couldn't reduce them in the past years, and we said as soon as we could, we would, and we've done it. So again, Michael, great job, and thank you and your staff. That's all I have.
Matters by the City Manager? Matters by the City Attorney?
Nothing at this time either.
All right, at this time, we'll take a break until 7:00 PM regular meeting. Councilmember Chapman, here. Councilmember Clayton, here. Councilmember Kendall, Deputy Mayor Quinn, Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, moment of reflection, please. Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and Star Ledger on January 4, 2018, and posted on a bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Next on the agenda is the presentation of the Asbury Park Fishing Club.
So I'm going to read a letter from the Asbury Park Fishing Club, specifically Joe Palado. The Asbury Park Fishing Club held its 26th Annual Fishing Flea Market in Convention Hall on March 11th. This successful event would not have been accomplished without the efforts of you, Mayor Moore, and the council, who continue to endorse our organization. Our membership appreciates this annual opportunity to showcase our beautiful beachfront and the city of Asbury Park. And thanks to Madison Marquette, especially Gary Matola, Chris Femiano, and staff in arranging for our show to return to Convention Hall. We also had more than 100 members of the Asbury Park Fishing Club volunteer their time and energy to ensure the success of this weekend's event. As is our practice, proceeds from the flea market are donated to over a dozen county nonprofits, specifically as an expression of our commitment to Asbury Park. It is with great pride that I present the City Council the following checks to organizations that directly benefit the citizens of our great city. And just as two people who've been on council, Joey Palado has been doing this for years for 90% of Asbury Park nonprofits and organizations in Asbury, so we want to super, super thank Joe Palado for that.
Yep, we thank Joe Palado, we thank Fishing Club, and how many people have the event on a Sunday, we have close to $5,000 worth of checks tonight to Asbury Park. These people, let alone, he's also given out many other thousand dollars to the Lurk Society, Clean Ocean Action, and other bottomed company. So we have to represent for Asbury Park Little League.
Asbury Park Little League is going to be getting $2,000. Yeah, we'll take a photo.
Yeah, Coach. Come on, Coach.
Oh, hold on, Kevin, get in the picture.
I'm shy.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Send Joey a thank you note, and you'll get a check next year. Send a thank you note, and you'll get a check.
The next check goes to the Asbury Park Boys and Girls Club. Do we have anyone here to accept that? Okay. And Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Monmouth County. And the next check is the Asbury Park Recreation Trust. Okay, and that's really the Asbury Park Recreation. The other one is Asbury's very famous Debbie DeLisi for the Asbury Park Rescue, the cat rescue. And just so everyone knows, Debbie has been rescuing, saving, and then taking care of cats that were living under the Asbury Park Boardwalk for 10 years? 10 years. So, kudos to her for that. Asbury Park Fireman's Fund, I'm guessing that's Kevin. Another amazing Asbury Park resident who continues to do great stuff is Connie Breach for the Asbury Park Toy Drive. And Connie gets the Asbury Park Toy Drive and the Asbury Park Toy Drive Christmas in July. So kudos to you for all that you do, Connie. And Barbara. And we're in what year of the Asbury Park Toy Drive? 18th year of the Asbury Park Toy Drive. So kudos to these two ladies for that. And Joey Palado also gives to other organizations that aren't in Asbury Park, like the Litoral Society and Clean Ocean Action. So one last round of applause for Joey Palado.
Joey said not to thank him, so I'm still going to thank him, but there's so many people in the club. It takes 100 people to put that fishing show together, set up all the tables and everything. They couldn't do it without the help of Madison Marquette, so that is deeply appreciated. And again, how many agencies have an event on a Sunday and turn it over close to $10,000 countywide three days later? So that's, it is amazing. Joe has been here his entire life. There's other people involved, Joe Urcolino, Dave, and most importantly, Joe's wife, Casey. Without Casey, it wouldn't come off, because Joe worries more than me. He's like, just give him another Xanax, and Casey will handle everything. So Casey, Joe, thank you so very, very much for helping Asbury Park.
At this time, the City Attorney would like to make a statement.
Yes, thank you. With regard to the city's short-term rental ordinance, I'm very pleased to report that on March 2, 2018, the Honorable Linda Grasso Jones of the Superior Court of New Jersey, Monmouth County Law Division, entered an order which dismissed with prejudice all counts of the complaint which had been filed by John Biondo, Timothy Horman, and the Committee of Petitioners, which challenged the city's adoption of its short-term rental ordinance, otherwise known as Ordinance Number 2017-40, which occurred on November 8, 2017. As you will recall, during the city's consideration of that ordinance, the Committee of Petitioners had contended that the city did not have the authority to adopt its ordinance, given that a separate ordinance had been submitted by the committee on the same topic through the initiative process as authorized under the Faulkner Act. The initiative process allows citizens to propose ordinances to the council and potentially to the voters at large for consideration, so long as the requisite number of signatures is achieved. The city respectfully disagreed with the position taken by the committee and the legal authority upon which they relied, and proceeded to adopt its ordinance on November 8. The city also rejected the separate ordinance which had been proposed by the committee on the same topic, which was Ordinance Number 43, as not being in the best interests of the city. The litigation challenging the city's adoption of its ordinance as filed by the committee followed. This order now puts that litigation to rest with prejudice and confirms that the city was, in fact, fully authorized to adopt its ordinance and was not stopped from doing so, as Mr. Biondo and the committee had contended. As such, the city's ordinance, rather, remains the law that is in effect regarding the short-term rental provisions of the city at this time. It should be noted, however, that the ballot question, which was submitted by the Committee of Petitioners regarding their own ordinance, will still be listed on the ballot for consideration by the voters in November, as it had previously been certified by the city clerk, absent further judicial intervention. That is a separate matter from the city's ordinance, and that's all I have to say at this point.
This time, can I have a motion to open a meeting to the public, please? Each member of the public has three minutes to speak. When you please come up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Michael, maybe you should put Michelle right. Okay?
Hello, Jordan Modell, Lofts on Second Avenue. So, sort of vis a vis the whole discussion that we've had on short term, the whole point of it was to keep Asbury, the city's position, which everyone agreed with, was to keep Asbury Asbury. So I wanted to just talk about the building that's being proposed across the street from the Lofts. Right now, I talked to Michelle, and I think it's 54,000 square feet, the entire lot, and 39,000 square feet for the building. The Lofts, which was proposed for 80 units, the Lofts, which is across the street, is 45,000 square feet and has 52 parking spots, meaning that there is three times, almost three times as many people going in across the street as there is in the Lofts, and only about 20% more land used for it. Given that, it's not that anybody or any of us in the Lofts who are going to speak today, I think, are against the project, we're all for it. We know we need ratables, and we especially need affordable housing. What we're mainly concerned about, or I'll just speak for me, what I'm mainly concerned about is parking. So if we look at the parking spots, literally up to four blocks away, which is Central Avenue, there are, on average, 15 parking spots because of the driveways, I went through this with Mike, right, per street. So that's a total of 60 parking spots on that side of the street. If the residents of the new proposed building don't get free parking, then, like, for example, with the SACMAN, when they charged $150 per person for a parking spot downtown, people start spilling onto the streets. So my main worry is that 80 units are going to be spilling out onto our streets, which are already, they're crowded in the winter, they're not totally crowded, but in the summer, they're packed. And that's going to affect the lifestyle for everybody on the West Side. You're going to have people who could park before who can't park now. The neighborhood is just an epitome of Asbury Park. It's rich, it's poor, it's middle class, it's upper-middle class, it's black, it's white, it's Hispanic, there are businesses there, and I really want to see the type of environment that we have maintained. So I would respectfully put forward, could the council just ensure two things? One is that they adhere to the fact that there should be 120 parking spots, because that's the rule, that's the law, that the units coming in, that's 1.5 units, 1.5 parking spots per unit. Two, that the parking spots, just like they are in the Lofts, be given to the residents of, at least one parking spot per, to the residents, and that they keep some guest parking, because right now, in the plans, there is no free parking for the two stores... because right now, in the plans, there is no free parking for the two stores that are there. So, again, the plans, as they look now, look lovely, but we don't know what it's going to end up being. So, could we just ensure, for the neighborhood's sake, and to keep the balance in the neighborhood for rich, poor, black, white, Hispanic, whatever, that we look at the parking situation and ensure that there's plenty of adequate parking? Not bad, right? Three minutes, on the done.
Practice, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rick Mortlock. I also live at the Lofts, and I serve on the board, and I'm joined this evening by other residents at the Lofts. So, I have a very broad, simple question on the development project, and that is, we understand that the planning board was not able to vet the details of this project under the 45-day limit. So, my question will be, why was that not possible? That's, first of all. And regarding the parking, I don't know if you've visited the grounds recently, but there's very little residential parking right now, as it is, on First Avenue or Second Avenue, especially Langford. Langford is used by tractor trailers, anywhere from three to five tractor trailers that are operated by the Hospital Care Services Company. So, there's just no parking there. So, this is a complex project. It involves remediation from a possibly toxic site. It involves quality of life, involves parking, involves a number of things. And I think it needs to be looked at by the planning board. We have a planning board to review these details and to serve as consultants to the council. So, I would first ask why the planning board was not able to vet this in the 45-day limit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Danny McKee. I live on Seventh Avenue. Just real quick, I wanted to thank the Fishing Club and give a little update of where we are as a Little League. This year, we did not charge any registration fee for our players. It had been $85 in the past, and we had the feeling that that was inhibiting a lot of people from signing up. Well, we have 100 kids signed up this year. You know, we, last year, we had about 72. We lost a bunch of kids who moved away, so about 50 of those 100 are new kids. So, we're real happy with that, that we expanded our roster rather than getting smaller, which is the case in many, many towns. This is probably one of the few Little Leagues that has actually gotten bigger this year. So, I want to thank Joe. Everything that we do is dependent upon community support, and that community means from Asbury Park all the way to California, because we have people out there that donate to. But we really appreciate the support that we get. We can't do it without the help of the community. We thank you very much.
Thank you. Go back for a second, please. Why don't you tell everybody your GoFundMe account?
There is, if you go to GoFundMe, that was basically set up by the people at Murphy's Tavern, Heather and Rob, and they set that up as, to try to raise money to offset the registration fees that we weren't going to be bringing in.
But it's still open, right?
Yes, it's still open.
So, if you give the address...
If you go to GoFundMe.com and just put in "Asbury Park Little League," it'll come up. So, I mean, every dollar helps, and we, you know, from new bats, which we have to buy this year, to our summer camp program, which we've been running now for 11 years or so, it's a good thing. So, we appreciate it.
Hopefully, everybody here, everybody on AP-TV will watch that and make a donation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I wanted to ask the city manager if he has reviewed the zoning ordinance that I talked about two weeks ago. That's either a yes or no answer. Also, I happen, I talked about this once before, those box trucks on the street, but now we're starting to see out-of-state license plates on them. Indiana, there was one from Illinois. I think it's getting to be a serious problem with these out-of-state license plates, and I think that you better start paying attention to them. As we know, all over the country, things are going on, and we don't want anything to happen here. When you see out-of-state license plates, they're only supposed to be good for one month. There's a state law or a federal law that says you have to change your plates to New Jersey. So, I want you to look into that, because I think that's going to be a real, serious problem. I see it already. The zoning ordinance, the five-and-a-half feet that I talked about from one property to the other, and then the last thing I wanted to talk about, is the Budget Committee still on the budget? And that's a yes or no answer. Okay?
I don't understand, is the Budget Committee still, is there still a Budget Committee? Yes.
So, do you still have a Budget Committee?
There still is. They're meeting Monday at 2:00.
Okay. So, they're working on the budget?
Yes.
Because you're passing a temporary budget tonight.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay.
A temporary budget with what, Rita? With what?
What about the zoning ordinance?
No, 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 with what, Rita? Because I'm going to make you say it, with what, Rita? Because so many times, you said, "Tax increase, tax increase." With a tax decrease, Rita? Are you going to say that? Okay, say it, Rita.
What?
Make me happy, say it.
So?
Okay. I tried. Says the zoning, Michael?
No.
Simple answers, no.
Oh, I want to congratulate also the plumbing inspector. Finally, somebody did something right. He came and inspected the new house, and he found that the plumbing was three-and-a-half feet from my property line. So, I don't know who he is, but I wanted to thank him anyway. One good thing happened. The plumbing inspector. Do you know, what's his name?
Michael, what's the plumbing inspector's name?
Huh?
Michael.
I don't remember.
You don't know his name? All right. Are you going to review the zoning ordinance?
No.
No? You're going to leave it five-and-a-half feet from the property line?
If you want the zoning ordinance to be reviewed, there's a process. I don't review that at this point.
Oh, well, who does?
I explained that to you last time.
Yeah. No, you didn't explain it the last time.
Yes, we did.
All right. Who do you go to to get the zoning ordinance, Dan?
Michelle.
Who?
Michelle.
Okay. Michelle. All right. And now, you're going to look into what I told you about the box trucks with the out-of-town, out-of-state license plates?
That question's come out many times from different sides of the towns, from many different people. We can't find a law saying you can only have a Carolina plate in Jersey for a month. There is no such law, we're being told by the police department. So, it's something that is tough to enforce. We do have license plate readers on the cars, and they do scan them and say things wrong, then they're towed, da-da. It's a problem all over the country, cars in other states. It's cheaper to get insurance from other states, and people do it, and they beat the system, but it's just next to impossible to enforce.
Yeah, but there's a lot of things going on in this country with bombs and guns. You have to look into these things, because we're a very small town. There shouldn't be that many license plates from out-of-town, out-of-state.
But there are.
I know there are. Dwayne talked about it two years ago, but now it's happening on each avenue.
Well, and Dwayne's been talking about it in the Southwest, you're right, for two years, and we've been looking into it for two years. Thank you, Rita.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council Chair, Grandma Longbrink. I wanted to say that St. Patrick Parade was really successful, nice reviews, and it was a great parade. The guys did a good job. A couple of things I wanted to bring up. The people that live at the Loft really didn't complain loud enough about those box trucks parked on Langford and Second Avenue. I don't think they're supposed to be overnight vehicles there, and sometimes on the weekends, they have the trailers. We need a better job of keeping them off the street, because they should pay to park them in somebody's lot, somewhere. There must be someplace where they could park those trailers and not on the street. But you can go many weekends, you'll see the trailers there.
Are they permitted?
There's box trailers left there overnight.
I doubt if they are permitted, but they are there all the time. So, I made a note to give to Michael that the police look into it first thing.
I think it'd be really interesting if they were just towed away and they had to go pay a hefty fine to go pick them up. The other thing was, I wanted to say is, you're discussing the budget. Has anybody's budget, any department's budget gone down? Anybody? Or even stayed the same, exactly the same? Just a question. Oh, Michael's saying yes, okay. So, maybe we can give them a star and say, "Could you tell the other people how you did it?" Because I did the problem with the budget going out of the way. And the other thing I wanted to say is, the new high-rise that's going up, are we videotaping or taking pictures every day that it's going up? Could that make a great thing for prosperity, to show how fast the building went up or how slow, whatever you want to say? But it'd be nice to show that building going up, because it's pretty, I mean, it leaves a big impression when you come to Asbury Park, and that'd be something to put on the website, showing how that building's going up. They had, you know, a picture a day, or whatever you like to do, like when they show, like, the bee, doing a beehive, showing that building go up. And the same thing with Arthur Pavilion, that should be videotaped too, because that's another important part of our beachfront, just an idea. And then, how are we doing with those panels? Are they ever going to be put back on the building, on Convention Hall?
The missing copper panels?
Well, they're gone. They're probably in some palace in Saudi Arabia, but I don't think anybody would cut them up. But when are they going, is there a deadline for them to restore that building or anything?
There's no deadline for them to be replaced.
There's no deadline for them to restore that building.
That's really sad, that there's no way to make them do it.
There's no deadline. We've been to Shippensburg, they've been to Shippensburg, they've been to the state, and they're doing interior work behind them, and they say, "When they're done with the interior work, then we'll replace them."
But in the meantime, that building's being eroded by the elements of the weather, whether it's storms, nor'easters, you know, frost and thaw. I mean, that's how nature takes down mountains.
I agree, in principle, and their engineers disagree with me and you.
I know, guys.
They're not in default of anything that the city can go down there and make them do anything about it.
There's no way to rewrite the rules?
Without a mutual contract, we can't even allowedably do it.
Well, just remember that when there comes time when they need their backs scratched.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Motion to close, oh, I'm sorry. Motion to close?
Second.
So, the only thing I was going to, I just wanted to mention to the gentleman who talked about the planning board, is that it's a totally different entity than, so, the planning board's a completely different entity with different staff and different, I think it was... No, yeah, no, you don't have to get, I'm not, you don't have to get up. It's going to be an ordinance, there'll be another public portion, but it's a different entity with different staff, and we can't say to the, we can't make the planning board do anything. So, if it's getting close to the deadline and it's not being heard, we are a separate entity that cannot, I want to use the right wording...
But can you use the one that they weren't able to, was it they didn't get the documents?
I think you're better off going to a planning board meeting and asking that.
We don't know.
Yeah, I can just comment that, as a matter of law, when a governing body wishes to either adopt a redevelopment plan or amend it, they have to make a referral of the proposal to the planning board. And the law says that the planning board then has 45 days to review and make recommendations back to the council regarding the plan or amendments that are proposed. The law also says that if the planning board doesn't act within the 45-day period of time, that the council is then relieved from the requirement of getting any further input from the planning board. And following the referral of the proposal from the council to the planning board, the 45-day period of time elapsed, with no action having been taken or review done by the planning board. So, by law, the council is relieved from any further input from the planning board and can proceed to take whatever action the council deems is appropriate. As to what happened at the planning board level, we don't know.
Well, nothing, right?
But I mean, what happened after the ordinance was referred to them, you know, I can't speak to that.
But there are two members of the council that sit on the planning board, correct?
Correct. It was never posted for, an agenda for the planning board?
Question can't be answered, other than by the planning board?
Correct.
So, who among the planning board might have that answer? Who's responsible?
You're going to have to get up to the microphone, say your name and address, please.
We already closed the public...
I can't close it on one, and then somebody else speaks, so if you're going to open up with a young lady, I'm going to open up for this gentleman.
Really quick, Frank Spina also...
Hold on, we need to reopen public session.
Motion to open again?
Move in.
Second.
So, just a quick question following up.
You have to provide your name for the record.
I thought I'd have.
I'm sorry.
Frank Spina, I'm also a resident of the Lofts. Who is the chair of the planning board, to whom we could actually escalate this or get some kind of answer as to why there was no meeting?
Barbara Krajczak.
She wasn't the chair at the time.
Okay. Then it was her and family.
Okay. So, it was our understanding that there was some turnover, and maybe that could be some rationale as to why this would never met on? No. Nobody has any insight on this, no?
As much as I'm on the planning board, I'm just a member. I do not schedule, I do not tell the professionals. Mayor and council cannot tell the planning board, the zoning board, the Board of Education, the Housing Authority, how to run their ship.
Understood.
So, I know it sounds stupid that we don't have an answer for you, but it's the law.
Well, thank you for acknowledging that. It does sound stupid, but I'll also say that, you know, it makes sense if there was some turnover in terms of who was responsible for leading the planning board, so.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, can we go now? Good evening. My name is Melissa Williams. My address is 3633 Highway 33 in Neptune. I'm a serial entrepreneur. I own Maxx's Cleaning Service LLC since 1997. The seeds of entrepreneurship were planted in me in 1979 by my mother, who owned a wig store in Asbury Park. So, since then, I've been creating programs and using my knowledge of entrepreneurship to coach and teach others. So, I've created Kids in Biz, which some people have heard of, Kids in Biz Program, Youth Entrepreneurship Group, because I believe the kids and adults in Asbury Park need to learn entrepreneurship and self-employment, to self-empower themselves. So, I've created the Kids in Biz Program and was hoping that one aspect of the Kids in Biz Program that I could bring to Asbury Park is, we've been selling the tie-dyes, as you can see, I have one, and a lot of people love the tie-dyes, so it's very marketable. And I was thinking, hoping that I could have the children come in, youth of all ages, it doesn't matter, and sell the tie-dyes in, at the different events that we have here, and to pay them, so they'll begin to learn sales skills, marketing skills, how to talk, how to speak, et cetera, and they'll have money in their pocket, so we can also work on financial literacy. That's one way of getting the Kids in Biz Program in. The second part is, I also teach adults. I write books. As you can see, I've created courses for the cleaning service, which I feel is a good entry for anybody to learn how to start a business. And with all the construction and the housing going on in Asbury Park, you have a lot of people who are not employed, and a good way to, with the cleaning business, they have all aspects, which is the post-construction cleanup, you have landscaping, and this floor stripping and waxing, window cleaning, and you have people who are in expungement, veterans, et cetera, single mothers like myself, and that's how I got started. It's low overhead costs, and I can provide training programs, and I'm trying to... And I'm trying to talk very fast, because, okay. And then the third part of that is I also teach minority certifications, which a lot of people, a lot of people I run into in construction and cleaning do not have. And that allowed me during 2007 to get a lot of contracts. I've done Arbor Villas, worked with the Lowes. You know, I've had a lot of large contracts, and people ask me how did I get them. Also, I had a business loan. So, all of this information, I can pass, I would like to give you brochures at the end of this, so you can know a little bit more about what I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jordan, you can only talk once at the... Well, you'll have, there'll be another bite, because it's an ordinance, it has public input. You have another bite at the apple for the Lofts.
Motion to close?
Have we ever taken like a two-minute recess to go to close executive?
I've seen it done in other places.
Yeah, if you feel that you need to do that, you can. For, you know, which topic, under the Open Public Meetings Act, do you wish to go into executive session for?
No, we'll go in there.
We will.
We'll go in there. About project 1001 first.
Attorney-client, are you looking for legal advice?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I'll take to make a motion.
You'll have to make a motion to go into executive session. We'll excuse ourselves and go into the back for a short period of time, not to exceed about five minutes, and then resume.
Can I have a second?
Second. Move it.
We'll move on to minutes, we have three sets of minutes this evening. We have executive session February 28th, we have workshop session February 28th, and we have regular session February 28th. Can I have a motion to move it, please?
Move it. Be better for Dana, because I have to abstain.
I'm gonna go, yes. Second.
Well, that's only two.
Yeah, exactly.
We need her. Well, we need her, because, okay.
Then wait a minute.
I mean, if I have to abstain, I wasn't here.
Did you read them? That's good enough.
Yeah, as long as you read them, we don't have to be here.
Really?
Yes.
I'm still abstaining, wait until Hannah gets back.
Yeah. Do you want me to move on to consent agenda?
Please.
Consent agenda, we have Resolution 2018-107, Resolution for special events application, 2018-108 declaring the third week in March as National Poison Prevention Week, 2018-109 Resolution authorizing the cancellation of taxes with respect to block 3205 Lot 16 601 Heck, 2018-110 Resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property for electronics, 2018-111 Governing bodies certification alliance with the United States Equal Opportunity Commission's enforcement guidance on the consideration of arrest and conviction records in employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Can I have a motion to adopt a consent agenda, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll move back up to minutes, the three sets of minutes of February 28, 2016. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Abstain.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Now we'll move back to individual resolutions. Resolution 2018-112 Resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for the 2018 budget. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-113 Resolution improving payment bills. Councilmember Chapman abstains from purchase order 2018-00972. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-114 Authorizing lease agreement for fire equipment on Storage and Main Street. I believe it was recommended for table this resolution. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-115 Resolution authorizing the purchase of a packer truck. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember, or any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-116 Amending contract for T N M services. T N M Associates for services for the Sunset at Footbridge project. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, question. Are we getting clues to clues on this project?
No.
No?
No.
Any reason why?
Well, this would extend it. It's not closed out till everything is paid and finalized. So, the P W's still open, technically. And since we don't wanna pay this out of pocket or negotiate with them, it stays open till this is finished.
Is this the last piece?
The open.
And then we'll find out how much of credit we got for the pilings that weren't driven 100 feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-117 Authorizing award of contract for installation and network cabling for City Hall. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-118 Awarding contract to Millennium Communications Group for security cameras in City Hall. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-119 Resolution authorizing the purchase of three police cars. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-121 Resolution authorizing the purchase of a fire department SUV. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.